How we doing, Madam Clerk? We're set?
All right.
I guess a few seconds more here. Has anybody heard from Henry? He's on his way in.
Ten seconds to spare.
Just in time. Look at that.
Well done.
Nine seconds to spare.
Go back and take a break.
I could have done one more thing.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At the hour of seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for March 11, 2019, at this hour. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Mark Haynes in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, we'll note that City Clerk Cheryl Hebert is keeping the minutes to tonight's meeting, and I'd ask that she begin by calling the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowns?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Angler?
Present.
Let the record show that all six counselors are either here or present tonight, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. Also note for the record that the City Council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Glenn Smith. First order of regular business tonight is acceptance of minutes. Before you counselors, you have the minutes to our regular, last regular meeting on February 25th. Those minutes were distributed almost immediately by the City Clerk, and as of today, no changes had been submitted to her, and so unless there are any at this hour, I'm going to declare that the minutes to our meeting of February 26, 25th, sorry, 2019 are accepted as presented by the clerk. We have no consent in action items tonight, so the first public order of business here is citizen comments. Now would be the correct time if anyone is with us tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone who would like to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, we have one nomination to consider tonight, and that is the appointment of our City Planning Director Dean Treffelin as a member of the Highway Safety Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2022. Highway Safety Commission, consists of eight members, one of which is our planning director or his designee. At the present time, the position is vacant, and Mr. Treffelin has volunteered to serve on this commission. Motion to be in order to appoint Dean Treffelin, Planning, Zoning, and Code Enforcement Director for the City of Laconia as a member of the Highway Safety Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2022. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, we have no presentations or public hearings tonight, so we're all ready to the Mayor's report. I have two items that I'd like to mention tonight. One is that, as you are aware, counselors, we have an entity in the city called the Mayor's Committee on Human Relations, and the bylaws for that committee, which has been in existence for just about 20 years now, calls for the mayor to make annual appointments to that, members of that committee. And so tonight, I'm going to list for the record, and I'll pass this down to the clerk, a list of members who I'm appointing to the Human Relations Committee for terms to expire at the end of March 2020. The names are as follows: Carol Pierce, David Stamps, Chris Adams, Janet Simmons, Judith Wright, Matt Canfield, Carrie Chandler, David Osman, Kathy James, Ali Hassan, Dennis Bothamley, and Kate Brusichova. That does not require council action or approval on those items, so if you would pass that down to the clerk. I would also note for the... What was I gonna say? The second thing I wanted to mention, and I handed this out to you, Counselor, just a few minutes ago, prior to the start of the meeting. I wanted to address a piece of city business here and ask for some action at the appropriate time tonight. And that is, as you know, under the Government Operations and Ordinances Subcommittee, which is chaired by Counselor Bowns, item five has been Regulation of Short-Term Residential Rental Businesses. And I believe that we, personally believe that we are at a point where we need to take some action on this front. And so my intent tonight is to encourage the relative immediately of some action in that regard. I think that our current policy of see no evil, hear no evil, is not terribly legally defensible in the long run, and that we need to get on this subject and make some decisions. So what you have before you tonight, as the title calls for, is an outlaw outline of proposed changes to zoning regulations regarding short-term rentals. And I have discussed this matter with Counselor Bowns, who chairs the appropriate committee, and I think we're, at least in very general terms, on the same page on this. And so when the appropriate time comes tonight to get to committee business, I'm going to ask that the council vote to refer this matter to the Committee on Government Operations and Ordinances for further study and recommendation. For those of you who are not familiar in our audience with the procedure, the council can recommend changes to the zoning ordinance and then vote on those changes, but first, they must be sent officially to the Planning Board for the Planning Board to review and to hold a hearing and make a recommendation back to the council as to whether the Planning Board thinks it's a good idea or not. So the path that I see this following is have this issue go to the committee. The committee, I would hope, would hold an expedited hearing meeting on the matter, and hopefully refer back to the council a firm recommendation, and that that recommendation would then go to the Planning Board and asking the Planning Board to consider it in a timely manner and get back to the City Council with a recommendation, their own recommendation, and that the City Council can consider it for adopting the ordinance. So what you have tonight is a rough outline for proposals. My feelings are not going to be hurt in the least if the committee decides to go a different direction or modify these or whatever, but this is something to, in my opinion, get us started off in a direction as far as regulating these that are concerned. So I want to stress that. Basically, what this calls for, this particular proposal calls for, without going through the whole thing line by line, although I'd be happy to answer any questions, is to come up with a new definition and a new designation for something called short-term lodging that would be redefined in the zoning ordinance. That's exactly what that means. And that that use of short-term lodging would be permitted with a conditional use permit in almost all the zones in the city. So the zones now where it is not permitted, it would become permitted with a conditional use permit. And what this proposal calls for is the Planning Board to be the regulatory, I'm sorry, the Planning Department to be the regulatory authority here in terms of granting conditional use permits for people who want to run this particular business in the city. And it would apply to everybody who wanted to, except for people who are currently doing it on property in the two zones where it is currently permitted, at the Weir's, basically, and that would not change. The the conditions that would be put on the permits, according to this proposal, would be twofold. There could be more, could be less, but twofold. And that is covered in item number eight. The property owner would have to agree to limit the total number of days. The whole or part of a residence may be rented to not more than 100 days per year under this particular proposal. And secondarily, the property owner would have to furnish the Planning Department with evidence that the abutters, sides back, and across the street do not object to the use. If the Planning Department, as a matter of administrative ruling, turns down the application for a conditional use permit, the applicant would be allowed to appeal that decision to the Planning Board, which would have the final say on the matter. For example, if I wanted to do this in my, with my home and rent it out occasionally on a short-term rental basis, and I went to my neighbors and asked them if it was okay with them, and I had one neighbor who objected, and therefore, I wouldn't meet the requirement for a conditional use permit because one of my neighbors said, "No, I don't want you to be able to do that." I would be able to appeal to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board would make a determination as to whether or not that particular neighbor's objection was a reasonable one or not. And the final word would be up to the Planning Board. By this proposal, applications, there would be a small application fee to be determined, and these permits would be issued on a calendar-year basis or a portion of a calendar-year basis. So you would have to, you would have to have your license in effect renewed annually, at which time there would be a chance for someone to object or a review of the performance standards and whatnot could be applicable with the with the renewal application. And substantial fines to be determined as to the amount would be a necessary part of this ordinance from an enforcement standpoint, I think. Just earlier this evening, I doubt that any of you have had a chance to look at it yet, I forwarded all of you a copy of an article that was in yesterday's New York Times that I think is particularly interesting and applicable, maybe not directly to us, but certainly on topic. An article that was having to do with a neighborhood in the Miami Beach area that's having a particularly hard time with this, and they've taken a really hard line there because that particular municipality doesn't want them at all, and they're trying to regulate them. But the most interesting thing about the fact, and I bring this up because of mentioning fines here, and I don't know how we define substantial fine, but in that community, which I think was Flamingo Park, Florida, the fine for first offense is $20,000.
That's pretty substantial.
That would probably qualify as pretty substantial. And their fines go up in increments of $20,000 for every reoccurring offense. So second offense is $40,000, third offense is $60,000, et cetera, et cetera. That's how intent they are. So the only thing I want to add to this is my reasoning, and this is the one piece of this puzzle that I feel strongly about. And that's the business of the, that I, that this proposal from me here calls for a 100-day limit on the number of, that's an arbitrary number, but on the limit to the number of days per year you could rent out your property on a short-term basis. And my reasoning for that is because my my greatest concern by far in this whole issue is I don't think it would be healthy for our city to be, to fall victim to investment homeownership, meaning that it will not do our city, in my opinion, any good for a substantial number of housing units in this city in residential neighborhoods to be devoted to the short-term rental business because those houses, for two reasons. One, those houses would be taken out of our housing stock, which we're short of already in terms of housing that would be available for people to live in on a full-time basis, either owning or renting. And secondly, I think that if we become a community where the homes are more and more owned by investors as opposed to people who are living them, I think that eats at the very fabric of community. And I think that's something that we should strive to avoid, that we, as best as possible, would like to be a community, a city of people who either through renting or ownership are a part of the community if they occupy housing units in this city. So having said that, I will, I'll defer action on this for a few minutes here when we get to committee business, which will be shortly. I would like to entertain a motion to have this matter referred to the appropriate committee. Any questions at this point?
At which point can we ask to add or subtract to your list?
I would say when we get to committee business.
Fair enough.
And we're actually at committee business now. What a coincidence. So now...
Oh, I got nothing to say.
Well, you know, if we're going to set this up for a hearing before the committee, I think that if members of the council or anybody, for that matter, has has input with respect to some of these considerations or suggestions as to what we might do, that the time to get that to the committee would be before we have our hearing. And if you want to treat this in expedited fashion, I don't see any reason why we can't and schedule this for a committee meeting before our next council meeting. I don't see any reason why we can't, but if there's input that people have, I know I have some input, as you know, get it to us so that we can review it.
Counsel Lippman?
In terms of needing to do it expedited versus doing it...
I got no skin in the game.
Yeah, I guess just to be sensitive to those people that may be in the middle of transactions that, you know, they may have bookings already for the summer or what have you. I think we should go at it deliberatively as opposed to expeditiously, if you will.
Well, the enforcement date would be a matter of discretion in terms of the council, in terms of when it would become effective, certainly. I think we'd have to take that. In fact, the conversations that I've had with people who are in the business of the local people who are in the business of facilitating rentals of this kind, the agents, if you will, what they're asking for is certainty. More than actually what the regulation is going to be or whatever, they're just asking for a degree of certainty so they can counsel with their clients about what they can do and what they can't do. And they don't want to, like you said, they don't want to rent it out for August and then find out later they can't do August, kind of thing. So that's, that's kind of what they're... But I would agree with Counselor Bowns. If anyone else has a detailed proposal or just a footnote or a reaction to this proposal or whatever that they would like to have forward to that committee, they should do so before the committee meets.
Right. And I guess, for clarification, when I say expedited, I don't mean that we give it short consideration. I mean, we give it due consideration in whatever timeframe it takes. I'm just...
Yes, and I think to Counselor Lippman's point, the key here is that once the council makes a decision what we're going to do on this, then we can, we can decide when is this going to be effective. And people will know months in advance that this is going to take effect on X date, that sort of thing.
And as you indicated, it still has to go before the Planning Board anyway.
So...
Mayor, I would hope we could add some form of inspection to assure that the property is safe and that we come up with a formula for the number of people. A two-bedroom house shouldn't have 20 people over the weekend, in my view. So I would hope those two things would be at least looked at in this conversation.
I would accept that as point number 11, Counselor Bowns, if you would like to make a note of that, that
I'll take it as 11 and 12.
inspections and other capacity regulations should be part of the ordinance.
I'll bull that as 11 and 12.
All right, so a motion to be in order then to refer this proposed change to zoning regulations regarding short-term rentals as presented tonight to the Council's Committee on Government Operations and Ordinances. Motion made by Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Counselor. Would you like to schedule a meeting?
Yeah. I'll take it. Can we accommodate it for the next regularly scheduled meeting at, say, 6 o'clock?
We can, and we can do our best to try to get this out on the city website and maybe put it in this Friday's Laconia link so that people know where to be sending feedback, and we can try to do our best to compile that in advance of that meeting.
If anybody thinks that more time is needed to put this together, say so now, because I don't have any skin in the game. It's, the timing of the next meeting is not critical to me.
And again, you could use that to go through the feedback and start to frame it a little tighter and then continue that on to another opportunity for comment. You might have comments that run the whole gamut.
I would think there'd be several meetings on this. I would think there'd be several meetings on this.
That's fine, as long as we get started expeditiously. I have no objection to that.
So I'll ask Counselor Hosmer and Cheney whether you're going to be available at the next regularly scheduled meeting was scheduled for 6 o'clock?
Counselor Bowns moves to schedule a meeting of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee for 6:00 PM on March 25th. Is there a second to that motion?
No, I think I've made the motion.
Did I make the motion?
No, we're scheduled...
Counselor Bowns made the motion.
For the schedule. Okay, I'll second it, sure.
Counselor Hosmer, second to the motion. Any discussion? All right, so we're voting to approve a meeting of the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee on March 25th at 6:00 PM to consider item five on their Agenda Regulation of Short-Term Residential Rental Businesses. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Six hoes in affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, any other committee business tonight?
Well, I guess I'm gonna, I'll bring this up now, and it may be more appropriate to bring it up later, but I'll bring it up now just so you'll know what I'm thinking. But we've got the proposal before us tonight with respect to roads and acceptance of roads as is with a number of different recommendations from the department. And I think that that's also an appropriate, some appropriate committee groundwork first before we take up the substance of that proposal. So I just, I bring it up now, so you'll know where I'm coming from.
How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight?
I guess I can...
Counselor Bowns?
Yeah, you were there, so you could make this, and so were you, Henry. But we had a special, we had a meeting of the Master Plan Subcommittee, or whatever you want to call it, just recently. And at the Planning Board meeting, the last Planning Board meeting, we had taken a proposal to do what we call performance, what I've called, what we call performance zoning, and designate certain areas of the downtown from basically the Belmont Line up to a point on Messer Street. At the special meeting that followed the next night, the committee recommended that that proposal, that performance downtown performance proposal, that's what happens when I speak closer to this mic. So be designated to run the entire length of Union Avenue, basically up to back the entire circle, so that it would cover from the Belmont Line up basically most of Union Avenue, but certainly the downtown, including different portions than the downtown Tiff up to Union Avenue. So what I anticipate is going to happen is that this will go, and the Planning Board scheduled a hearing on that, so that the next Planning Board hearing, there will be a public hearing on the current proposal for performance zoning. What I anticipate will happen is that it may be modified to adopt the committee's recommendation with respect to performance zoning, which would then require another hearing before the Planning Board. And assuming the Planning Board adopts some kind of proposal for performance zoning in the downtown, that will then come before the City Council for approval. So that's kind of a rough idea where we're at.
We're sort of expecting it to come back to the City Council at the second meeting of May, if everything falls in the line.
If, if the, if the new changes are adopted by the Planning Board at the next scheduled hearing, which will be in April, then there'll be a second hearing in May, which would bring us to a recommendation to the council coming in here for the second meeting of May. There.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes, I'm the liaison for Lake Region Public Access, and we are having our annual meeting of Lake Region Public Access Television Board of Directors, and that'll be Wednesday, March 27th, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM here at the Baldi, Armored Baldi Council Chambers here at City Hall. So everybody's invited to participate in that. It'll be a...
What's the date again?
March 27th. From 5:00 to 6:30.
Right here, in this room?
Right here.
Okay. All right, anyone else liaison? Okay, next up is Citizens Request to Comment on Current Agenda Items. This is a place on our agenda where it's appropriate for anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda. Met by anyone is on tonight's agenda. Okay, Mr. Myers, we're already to you on the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So included in your agenda packet for our first meeting of the month, you have the Federal Building Operational Trends Report. At the very top is our building permit report. And as a reminder, this runs on the state assessing year, which runs from April 1st to March 31st. So we are in the final month of the assessing year. The reason that's important to us and why we track it for a couple of reasons, but probably the most prominent one is that is one of the benchmarks, if you will, that we use in our tax cap calculation and putting the budget together. The first one being the inflation number, the CPI number that runs from January through December. We had that number mid-January. That's at 2.5%. The building permit takes the value of new building permits, and that's the second component. So the inflation number and the building permit value give us the maximum amount that a budget can be presented or approved without exceeding the tax cap. So we're currently a little bit under $15 million. A year ago at this time, we were about $3.5 million ahead, and two years ago, we were about $1.5 million or a little bit more ahead of pace. So we are behind a little bit, and again, March will be the final month before we tally that number for good. When I was starting to make original budget estimates back in December, early January, I was estimating a $17 million value based on where the numbers were at that point. So we would have to hit a really good March. It could happen. Some of it depends on how the weather breaks. The weather hasn't been breaking great, but at least this week looks to be a little bit more moderate in temperatures. But I have since backed down my estimate to a $15 million level and knowing that we can always increase it before the budget's presented, and I've shared that information with the school administration as well. I'd originally give them, once we had received the inflation number in January, I kind of gave them some estimates, but I've just let them know that this is where we're running, and they ought to maybe be looking to make adjustments. and they ought to maybe be looking to make adjustments, at least on their initial submittal, and there's always room to amend it later on. So Glenn and I are kind of in that final 10,000-foot range or less of putting the budget together. Our plan is to have it presented to the City Council and Mayor at the first meeting in April, I believe that's April 11th, I believe, I could be wrong on that. The clerk's going to find out for me.
April 9th.
April 9th.
April 8th, I'm sorry.
April 8th, it's getting shorter, so April 8th is when we plan on having the budget presented to you. Continuing with the report, your fire and rescue calls, again, trending just below 400 calls a month, and that seems to be the norm for what we're responding to as far as emergencies. Under the public assistance, the welfare, I've shared with you for several months now that we continue to be very active in supporting residents for various needs under the welfare department and public assistance, and you can see February in terms of city relief provided was again a strong month there, and it's covering all, all types of requests. It's not one thing that we can point to as to what's driving it. Second page of the report, again, you can see the police activity, the department continues to be busy, and you can see the breakdown there. Scrolling down a little bit to property tax collection, you can see the 2018 warrant collection, and then years going back as far as 2012 in this report, and we're at the strongest level for collection going back over the period of 2012 to current, so we're just at about 98% collected of the 2018 warrant. Similar story in motor vehicle registrations at the bottom of the page. We're two-thirds of the way through our fiscal year, so we've got four months left, so to be on track, we would want to be at about 67% of revenue target, and you can see that we're running just shy of 71%, so we're running four percentage points higher in that department or with the registrations and the revenue collected than we had anticipated at that point. So that's a sign of, again, strong demand, strong economy. The overtime by various departments is available to you on the third page of the report. Happy to take any questions on that. On page four, we really haven't seen a huge change on impact fee revenue, a lot of that is, for this last few months, a lot of that ties to certificate of occupancy, and it includes projects that were not grandfathered, that were already approved when the impact fees went into effect at around the 2010 timeframe. You can see the expendable trust balances for non-capital reserve, accrued leave, winter maintenance, et cetera. We didn't have any changes in those since the last meeting. Page five of the report, boat taxes. I know you look out your window and you think it's not boating season, but it is. Fishing season starts soon, and the clerk and her staff are ready and willing and able to register all boats, personal watercraft, and you don't have to be a Laconia resident, anybody can utilize that service to register the boats, and we can get you stickers immediately and out the door and ready to go. The EMS billing history, we continue to put a fair amount of staff time into this in learning various procedures and policies of the various insurance companies we're dealing with. We're having regular calls with our collection agency. We are working with a, an additional firm for items that we are not successful collecting with our collection agency, going to a different level with a different firm to go after that, in some cases, setting up payment schedules for people. So I've said to you all the way along that, on an average, in order to hit our revenue target over a 12-month period, $85,000 is the, is kind of the number that we're shooting for. So while not perfect, I'm pleased to say that at least we've got three out of four months, our oldest month as far as aging of the invoices, that we're in the $80,000 range, with one of them hitting $85,000. And again, learning what we've learned, knowing in some cases how we need to approach some of these bills a second and maybe even a third time, depending on how an insurance provider may be paying and what may be balance billed to the patient after that, and some of the processes there. It may continue to trickle in, but I, I am more confident sitting here today, knowing that we've got three months in the $80,000 range, that that $85,000 is very attainable, and I think that our revenue numbers are coming in very solid. Additionally, on the expense side, we are running below our expense, so even if revenue were not, on the billing, turn out to hit the million dollars, I'm comfortable that on the expense side, we are, I don't want to say significantly under, but tens of thousands of dollars, so several percentage points under on the expense side as of right now, so.
What's the reason for that?
First year, we've just made some estimates as to what expenses were going to be on the ambulances per se, as far as replacing medical supplies. In the past, when we had the arrangement with LRG Healthcare, since they were billing and doing all of that, if we used a particular IV or a particular piece of apparatus that was replaceable, it would just be replaced by the hospital coming onto the ambulance. So we were making some assumptions as to what our ambulance expense was going to be kind of in those small items, and then just some other items regarding workers' comp, breaking that piece out, so it's paying its own, you know, property and liability insurance on the ambulances that we run, looking at staffing, looking at vehicle expenses, all of those things. We had made some assumptions based on, based on some past history, but now it was something that we owned, and we're, we're, we're learning a little bit along the way, but we're also realizing that we've made some conservative estimates, and we think that expenses are going to come in underneath that million-dollar threshold that we targeted.
Councilor Hosmer has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It also looks like we are trending with fewer ambulance calls than we did in 2017, if I'm reading this correctly, right?
The number of billable trips is down a little bit. I always caution that the last month, in this case, the February month, I expect that number to go up because some of those calls might have happened in the last two or three days in February, and the billing company was just receiving that information and hadn't sent the bill out when we asked them for the February report, so that final trailing month, but I think some of that may be due to our population. We certainly probably have more people in the region in the summer, you know, into the fall months, and maybe winter months, more people are away, or, or there's, you know, less activity here in the wintertime than in the summertime.
Sure. Just a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor. We had, you had mentioned at one of the last meetings about one of the insurers being a chronic slow payer. Has that changed at all, or?
We've had conversations with them. They're a very large carrier, they've got plans that are both in-state and out-of-state, and they get handled differently on who the insurer may pay and how much they're paying. In some cases, New Hampshire law calls for the payer to make payments in a certain method for New Hampshire plans, but if somebody were to be employed in Massachusetts, let's say, even though they lived here, that's considered a Massachusetts plan, and the way that goes to get paid can be handled differently. Also, insurance carriers sometimes tend to classify an ambulance call as an out-of-network provider, and under that scenario, they may only pay a portion of the claim and let the patient know that they're responsible for the rest, something that our primary billing company is doing once we determine that an insurer has paid what they consider to be their fair share, is we're sending a letter to the patient saying, "Your carrier has said this. We encourage you to call your carrier and say that this was an emergency, you know, ambulance-related call, and therefore I had no option regarding in-network, out-of-network," and ask them to resubmit the claim and relook at it again. So that's a little bit of the lag time of us getting a partial payment.
I see.
That needing to contact the patient to say, "This is your balance, but you have this available to you." Something may or may not get resubmitted to the insurer, that would be up to the patient to do it at that point. So that's a little bit of, of the lag sometimes on how we're trying to follow the paper trail on certain claims, not all claims. We've got some insurance companies that are on top of it on the private end, and so far, I'd say overall, we've been very satisfied with the performance of the federal programs in Medicare and Medicaid, even though they pay a fixed rate that is a very small reimbursement or payment, if you will. Overall, how they process the claims and get the funds to the providers is, is very solid.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilor Bowns?
Apart from the hitting the marker of $85,000 a month, was there, I thought at some point there'd be, there was a percentage calculation of how much we need to recover for the particular charges, 66 or 63, was I wrong about that? Or were you just using a flat, flat number of $85,000 in terms of hitting that mark?
That was the simplest way of getting to a million dollars, 12 times 85,000 got you at a billion. We know there aren't always going to be the exact same number of billable trips every month, and we will know that it's not going to be an identical payer mix every month. So if we're, if we had more Medicaid runs in any given month, that net charge is going to be less than if there were more private pay runs during that given month, just because on where we know the reimbursement dollars are. So a little bit of it will depend on our payer mix month to month, but I would think over a period of time, that's going to average out, and we know there'll be some, you know, ups and downs on a little bit, but after doing this for a year, give or take, we'll know what our payer mix on average is going to be. So some of it might depend on trips, and some of it might depend on the type of trip in terms of the net billing to it as well.
So, you know, I'm just going to take the, take the July figures, because that's the furthest out.
Sure.
And ask whether, you know, we probably can consider July, all that we're going to be able to, to collect on that.
No, I think you're going to see some for the reason that I just stated about an insurer paying part, and then patient billing, and us going back to the patient, and the patient going back to the insurer. I think some of that will take a little bit. I think some of the, what we've determined as write-offs right now have, some are true write-offs, some have gone to that secondary collection agency, and those are people that we may see on payment schedules. It may be something that is going to be $100 a month or $50 a month, but they're working towards paying off their debt. So I think that, I don't, I don't see great leaps and bounds when we get to the March number from the February number, but I think that will continue to grow a little bit.
Well, I'm, I'm only thinking of this in terms of the proposed budget that we'll be dealing with quite soon, and how we're going to reconcile this, so to speak, and how we're going to approach it. I mean, I'm not opposed to using $85,000 a month, 12 months, that gets us to a million-dollar mark. I just want to have some kind of idea of how close we're actually going to get and how sustainable that's going to be over time.
And I agree with you, and Glenn and I, and Glenn, since he's been here, has jumped into this, he just passed me a note saying that just today, we received a $4,500 payment that was logged into that July silo, so that just could have been something that, I know at least on one or two of the providers, there was something administratively in setting up the accounts, where it's getting spit out on their end for whatever reason, that they weren't recognizing our federal medical number, whatever is referred to, type of thing. So absolutely, we, we have the expectation of this, you know, of expenses equalizing revenue in the budget. So by the time we put together the April budget for you, we will have one more month's worth of data that we're looking at. And as I've just shared, I think the expenses are coming in under where we anticipated, so I think if I had to forecast based on an average number of calls going forward between now and June 30th, I'm going to say that the expenses are probably going to come in somewhere in the 910 to $930,000 range, which would be $70,000 to $90,000 under our budgeted expense. So we're learning on, we're learning on that end, and that number is, is trending positive for us in the terms of it coming in under.
So Scott, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
With the $4,500 check today, does that mean July 2018, our payments will go, will hit the $85,000 mark?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was for, it was for a July invoice that just we received that money today. So that, so that will go on top of the 81 to 95, and whatever July revenue comes in in pieces, large and small, for the month of March.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
So I've got the last page of the report is Public Works Storm Summary. You know, we haven't had any huge events this year, but by looking at February, you can see that we were out 14 times, which is every other day in the month on average, and the majority of the storms have been dealing with, as we all know, from shoveling and snow blowing, heavy wet snow and refreezing and icing in. So the real driver of our, of our cost in February, while overtime was around 25,000 for the month, I mean, look at the cost of the salt, it was almost $73,000 for the month. So there was just that type of weather events and depending on when they hit. So we are a good chunk into our budget right now. We're hoping, we're hoping for milder weather, and I think our crews have done a great job and been out there a lot, and I think they're hoping a little bit of a break too. I know sometimes they like the extra work, but it gets to a point where, where they say, "Okay, let's, let's move on to other things." So we continue to, obviously, we're going to continue to respond to all events and make sure that the roads are safe, and if we need to get out there in the mornings after a freeze thaw and get some, some salt or some sand down on the road so that everybody's safe getting out in the morning, we're going to continue to do that, and we'll provide more updates for you once we get through the month of March. But we are collectively, when you look at what we allocate for overtime, what we look for outside contractors who handle some of the city parking lots, and then what we have for our operational cost, you know, versus some of the repairs to the plow blades and the purchase of salt and sand and whatever, we've, we've probably eaten up the lion's share of our budget at this point, but we've still got some material in the salt and sand shed, so we'll watch the next week or 10 days for the most part. Looks fairly positive from the snow plowing world, at least, at least my perspective of the snow plowing world.
Well, this is, this is New Hampshire. We're not done with March or April.
We still have April and May to go, Councilor, you are correct. I'm happy to take questions on my report or anything else the council may have tonight.
Questions or comments for the manager? No? Okay, thank you. We're on to new business. First item of new business, snow removal procedure. Remind the council that, at the end of our last meeting, issue of snow removal in the downtown area was mentioned as a concern, and we asked that this be put on the agenda, and Mr. Wes Anderson, Director of Public Works, is here tonight to address this issue.
Thank you, if I could have the, yep. Oops, getting way too fast. Okay. I'm going to basically cover it in two pieces. We'll talk about the sidewalks first, then go on to the, the street plowing. And, there we go. Okay, early in the winter, we had some issues with our sidewalks and how we were taking care of them. Basic problem came back, so I had four employees leave over the past year, and that generated basically meaning I had three new sidewalk tractor operators at the very beginning of the wintertime. I had two that were carryovers, experienced ones, and one had medical problems. He had come out of surgery, we were waiting for him to come back, and the other had some issues. So we were fighting to get our system back up and straight for the beginning of the winter, and as the winter progressed, you could see the training and everything improved. Okay, whoops. All right, one more try. There we go. All right, there was another question that we had at, and last from Councilmember Cheney, and I just want to point out to a degree so we can understand what was happening. We were clearing the sidewalks and the crosswalks on both sides because we couldn't get to the point to go in with the equipment during the month of February. What we were doing, we're punching through the snowbank with our sidewalk tractors in places, so we had openings for the people who are at the cars to get into the sidewalk. One of the openings that they had made was actually at that abandoned sidewalk over there by MC Cycle.
Crosswalk.
Excuse, thank you. The abandoned crosswalk by MC Cycle. You can still see it there, you can still see it on the pavement right now, but it was abandoned because either side of that sidewalk, either side of that crosswalk is not ADA accessible. When we rebuilt the downtown, we built it a more appropriate for ADA accessibility down by, whoops, there we go. Down by the, and I went too far, I apologize for that. Let me back up. Went down by, closer towards MC Cycle, and put it in, and you can see both sides of it are ADA accessible.
The same picture.
Same picture, yep, just brighter, there we go, okay. All right, and...
Wes, we're not seeing any different slide than the one you showed us.
Yep, I'm going to the next one. It appeared differently on mine. Okay, so some background, just so everyone understands, I basically have one shift. I have, when everyone comes in to plow, I've got approximately 20 people. The, we, if we're, it's a 24-hour storm, we're there for 24 hours, we take breaks necessary to keep the guys awake and moving, but we're there for one shift. Of that, I have five people on my sidewalk crew, and I have 13... Of that, I have five people on my sidewalk crew and I have thirteen people who are running plows. I have another one who's on my loader, look, keeping the, the, uh, salt trucks loaded. And then I have one more who's on a wing, but he's also my backup operator if someone else is sick or something. Uh, and then, of course, the city and the school parking lots are plowed by contract. Uh, the sidewalk team itself, we have five employees on it and they have six plows. Two Bobcats and four of the tracked sidewalk tractors that you see go down. Depending upon the storm is how we do the mix, what type of storm it is and which one is supposed to go out. We always have one sidewalk operator in a Bobcat in the downtown. After that, then we start mixing depending upon what the storm is. The remainder, what we focus on is basically in the urbanized area. Here, Lakeport area, sidewalks in between, sidewalks going down to Shaw. We don't hit Weir's Beach till after the storm's over with and we get further along in the cleanup process before we go up there. Uh, how we actually do our sidewalk plowing really depends upon timing of the storm, the duration, the intensity, and what is the school system's plans. Uh, are they going to be off the next day? Are they off for vacation week? Do they have activities at night that we have to support? So all that's taken into effect in how we actually do our sidewalk plowing. The challenges that we have, uh, the only blowers I have are on my two Bobcats. Uh, you'll see them going around as they move from site to site. That's the fastest they go. So we're limited by how fast they can go. My tractors have plows or a straight plow, so I can't really blow with it. So in the final cleanup stages of it, we're limited by our snow blowers that are on our Bobcats. Uh, sidewalk, sanding wise, I have two tow behind Sanders right now. We just got a third one back up. It used to be the, the sidewalk sander that we took all the parts off of to keep the others going. Uh, so they're back up. Uh, we're limited by how much material we can put out, how fast and how long it takes it. Generally, from the time a storm hits, if it's fairly significant, it takes us between two and four days to finish the sidewalks. Uh, when we're doing sidewalk sanding, we also have to have a dump truck with a crew in support because the hoppers are so small, if they're not operating close to us, we have to have a truck follow them around going from sidewalk tractor to keep them filled. When eventually we do get to the point, we load up one of the Bobcats, we haul it up to Weir's Beach and we plow the sidewalks from basically the post office up to Cumberland Farms and then from the Weir's Beach sign up to Foster on the arcade side of the street. So that'll get done. Uh, we have some other challenges. The sidewalk tractors are about fifty-two inches in width, around five feet wide. Uh, there are some places in the city, namely Hanover Street, we can't put them on the sidewalk on the, the street on the north side. Uh, the street lights are in the way and it's not really wide enough. So when we do Hanover Street for snow clearing, we clear the sidewalk off the, the north side of the building. Uh, the other pieces, we got telephone poles that are in the way. We have to work around. And then the other piece to it that we're working is trying to get all the automobiles off the sidewalks so it doesn't block us when we go to do plowing. Swapping, swapping over to snow removal, uh, we have a total of thirteen plows. One of those is the, uh, scoop loader that has a plow on it. You see going around the downtown area, the rest are trucks. Prior to, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen timeframe, we had the same number of trucks, but we only had one truck that had a salter in the back. So what that meant, at the beginning of the storm, typically what you saw is four dedicated salters going out, salting the streets. Once it got bad enough that they had to plow, they had to come in, they had to get into their plow trucks. We had to bring the rest of the plow crews in and go back out. After they finished, they had to come back in, uh, to get on the trucks again and, uh, put the salt back on the road. Uh, in twenty sixteen or early in that, City Council directed us to get more efficient in regards to how we plowed. We did that. Uh, in the winter of twenty-six, twenty, twenty seventeen, we slid one sander that we already owned in the back of one of the trucks and we purchased two Sanders for the five fifties. So we had at that point, four Sanders in the back of trucks. For the winter of seventeen and eighteen, uh, just about towards the end of the winter, we had Sanders in every single vehicle. So we were changing our operational procedures to support that piece. That really wasn't that difficult for that winter because we had some gaps in between. This winter, it's been real interesting because now we have to time it to be able to haul the salters out of the back whenever we want to haul snow. So we're changing it from the standpoint of prior to that, we could just literally drop the front plows on a plow truck, send it downtown, link it up with a scoop loader and start hauling. So theoretically, we could start hauling the next day. Now we have to get the salters out of the back. For three, it's about two to three hours, depending upon what the weather conditions are like. Is it warm? Is it cold? Is it rainy for us to do it? And then the other piece we have to watch is what's the window? Because we also have to plan on getting the salters back in the trucks. In the month of February, that was a challenge. Uh, a lot of times it was two or three days and we knew we were going to have to go back out. We really looked for a five to seven day window, which is what happened last week. Sunday, we had snow. It was predicting not till Sunday again. We yanked the salters out Monday morning and started hauling snow the next day. Uh, so that's how we're, we're doing it. Uh, and the other piece to it is we also have to balance priorities. This has been a real weird winter. We've gotten snow, then rain. It's been warm for a couple of days and then freezing, almost like the thaw, the thaw season that we had in the beginning. So we had a lot of potholes going. So we were matching or bouncing potholes versus sidewalk clearing versus snow removal to keep everything going. And it was a challenge in the month of February. Other than that, if there are any questions?
Counselors?
Counsel Cheney. Wes, uh, could you, in, in the budget process this year, perhaps, give us some idea of what it might cost to, to contract? Rather than, I think, taking Sanders out and putting them back in is, is, is probably not the most efficient thing we could do. It, it would seem to me we could hire trucks to, to haul off a main street in the downtown area uh, and, and economically probably be as efficient in the end run. Does, is that an unreasonable request?
We can look at it from the, the price standpoint. It's not in the budget that I submitted for coming up. So we'll have to look to see what adjustments need to be made. I'll make some assumptions to see what it looks like.
Okay.
We actually do have prices because right now it's in the contracts that we have for hauling snow from the schools.
And just a question, a clarification. Are you looking for a figure just for the removal of snow? For getting that stuff off the streets? Is that, is that what you're looking for? Yes, because I think that's the problem that Wes is identifying is making it difficult because they have to keep taking Sanders out of trucks and whatever.
Go ahead.
Further question. Some of us, I, I think some of us got a notice from someone at, on Spring Street about a problem with seventy-one Spring Street and abandoned vehicle.
Summer.
Summer Street.
Summer Street, I'm sorry.
It's gone.
It's gone. The, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
The, the person that I spoke to said that they'd spoken to your department who suggested they, you know, contact the police, which I think is appropriate. But I wondered if you had, were, were at all familiar with it. I see it as a potential problem around the city that needs to be dealt with.
We have a lot of sidewalks that are very close to houses.
Yep.
And they have very short driveways. So we have a lot, and I'll just put it where they'll have a F, F-one-fifty crew cab with a long bed in a driveway that wasn't designed for it. Uh, we are starting, the process now is starting a campaign to get the residents to understand and start enforcing it to get them to stop parking on the sidewalks or blocking the sidewalks. By city ordinance that already exists, they cannot block the sidewalk at any time of the year. Basically, the, there has to be a forty-eight inch width on the sidewalk at all time for ADA accessibility as it goes down. So for the most part, even in the summer, they're not supposed to be parking, parking on the driveway and then blocking the sidewalk.
It, is it, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is it routine for you or your folks to contact the police department with these issues? And if so, are you getting response?
We are. This year, we really were focusing on getting the vehicles that are parked on the road off the road. Uh, for the most part, you know, unless it's a snow emergency, we have to wait to midnight. Uh, myself and then my, my, uh, General Foreman were out when we were looking. We were watching what the vehicles were and we were calling it to the police department and telling them what we wanted to do at that time. If it was the first incident, we'd tell them to ticket it. If after that, then we were telling them, please tow it. Or if it was in a critical spot, we couldn't afford to leave it there. We were getting it towed. The sidewalk issues, we haven't tackled at this point and we're looking to start doing that now.
Thank you, sir. Can I just add on to that? So I, so I received that email that you all received and, um, I immediately said to Wes, you know, hey, is this something that's happening? And, and he said he hears it from some locations from his sidewalk, uh, drivers, but he hadn't heard that one. So then we'd taken it, we forwarded it on to police. Police went investigative. The car was moved. We actually got a nice response back on a, on an email trail that went to Chief Keenfield and Wes and myself and the officer. It was addressed that night. Beyond that though, to your point, I said separately to Wes and separately to the chief, how many sets of eyes do we have driving around this city and has that car really been there that long? And how come nobody said anything, did anything, you know? Let's talk about how, you know, what we're doing and how we're communicating out there. So that has, that has occurred both within Public Works and within police because, um, you know, Armin was sitting over there. He'd be like, park it on sidewalks. He ranks right up there with his pet peeves and, and mine too. And you see it and you see people have to get off the sidewalk and walk in the street and it's not safe and it shouldn't happen. So we are addressing it to a step further. What Wes was mentioning is we've got a template form letter going in right now. That first thing to try to be a kinder, gentler city. If we see it there, there's a form letter that goes on, on the windshield saying the ordinance that they're violating and that, that this can't occur and this is their first warning. And now we're tabulating those instances of sidewalk blockage, whether it's winter or summer. Um, it's going to be something that we'll monitor and really pay more focus on. But I'm, I'm with you, Counselor. I was like, what?
I was trying to be kind.
I wa, I wasn't as kind. But I think, I think we're in a good spot on how we're going to address it going forward.
Counsel Hamel.
Uh, I think one of the, uh, things Wes could probably look at is, uh, especially like on Pleasant Street, on the western side of the, the street, sidewalk, where it gets no sun till June. Um, that, that side of the street gets really icy, uh, the sidewalk rather, gets really icy all the time. And the patrons that travel that, I mean, even, even the businesses have gone out and thrown salt and sand and at their own expense to try because their businesses, uh, you know, try to get them in the door without slipping. So, uh, maybe where we have, uh, uh, areas that the sun doesn't get to, we might take a little more caution on those if that could be possible.
We can do that.
Okay. Um, also, speaking of, uh, you know, cars on the sidewalks and, and things like that, uh, there's a portion of Winter Street that has, the sidewalk has not been able to have been plowed in probably the last four storms.
And that's one of the areas that we're working on.
Still there right now.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, you know, people do, I mean, it, it's sometimes it's even hard for a car to get around uh, because they're, they're blocking so much of that road and I think you know what I mean.
Yes, I know precisely which area you mean. Because generally, that's the one of my, ones I do right after midnight.
Yeah. It, 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 does it say you can't park from midnight to whatever? Or I think, isn't it, doesn't the rule say anytime there's a storm, you can't park?
No, the, unless there's a snow emergency, then no parking on the road is from midnight to six-thirty. If there's a snow emergency declared, then there's no parking on the roads.
Okay, which is few snow emergencies. It's just the, the hours.
Yep.
Counsel Haynes.
Wes, do we have a snow blower?
We have a big snow blower.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
Yeah, we do.
Is that ineffective to use?
It, it is, but it's really best on the straight shots. If you go along the side of the road, it's very difficult, uh, to do downtown unless we push it into the middle of the road.
Yeah, you'd have to wind road.
We'd have to wind road and into the middle of the road and blow. Uh, the year before I got here, I think it was the winter, they were actually using a lot because they had a lot of heavy snow storms and it had mounted up fairly high fairly quickly.
Yeah, okay.
The last two, we really haven't had that many. Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was concerned because I looked at some of the ice shelves that were left on the sidewalk and that was, that's just as dangerous as the snowbanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was some thick ones.
Go ahead.
Um, I would support Counsel Cheney's efforts as far as using larger trucks and so that we're not shuffling. Somebody's going to get hurt if you're taking these things off, off and on all the time.
Yep. Yeah, and we're, we prefer to do it in daylight when it's sunny and dry.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Scott, you may...
Uh, actually, it was Monday of last week after the storm got through.
Scott, you mentioned the number of eyes. Um, there's been a vacant, uh, electric wheelchair on Harvard Street since the middle of probably November, December, and it's still right in front of that red house.
Okay, I drove it today and I'll have to admit, I didn't see it, so my eyes, uh, it's gone?
I don't know. It might be gone. I haven't been down there since...
Is it on the sidewalk or is it in a?
Well, it's half on the sidewalk and half off the sidewalk.
I will look better tonight on my way home.
No, but it amazes me, you know, the Public Works goes by, the police department goes by. That doesn't belong on the sidewalk. I don't care who reports, even if it's Parks and Recreation. It doesn't belong there.
I agree. And I've said to all staff, you know, let's, if you see something, you know, we need to take pride in. Just because it's not in your wheelhouse, if you see a stop sign that's bent over, maybe you're in code enforcement. But either let your department head or let me or someone, you don't have to go and be the bad guy to whatever department might be involved. But let's report it. We have enough employees out and about in this city, both commuting to work or working on the roads, that we want them to be offering these things up for us so we can take better pride in, in our infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Someone else? Counsel Hamel?
Yeah, I, I know a long time ago, we, we used to lease out trucks, rent trucks from private operators. You know, they would bring their trucks in. We used to do that a lot in removing the snow with the stove blower that goes on the payloader. Uh, I mean, that, that they could chew up some snow. I mean, to me, that's a more efficient way of doing it because it mushes it up so that you can put a lot more in a truck than a couple scoopfuls. Um, but, uh, I agree with, uh, Scott. I hope something is said, gets said and, and gets remembered about, you know, things around our city that needs to be looked at. Because I've been, I've called Public Works, I don't know how many times. Spring's coming and then unthawing of the couches and chairs on the lawns of the city is going to start showing again. And, um, I mean, I used to call Ann all the time, you know, the couch in front of this place, that place. And it, it, it should have already been reported because it was there for three weeks. You know, I, I just don't understand why, like you say, that our employees that drive around all the time can't take pride and, and looking at these things and saying, you know, give a, give an address so that Public Works can call them and the landlords, mostly it's landlords, you know, to get rid of this stuff, you know?
And I think our employees generally do take pride, so I just want to go and entertain that. And sometimes something may be out and you've got to stop and think, what trash day? And maybe a bulky sticker's coming in. You're right, sometime it's dumping and it's there. And after, uh, you know, ten days or so, then yes, somebody ought to see it that it's there and we ought to do a better job of taking note of it. So we've, we'll continue to have those conversations. We don't have it nailed by any stretch. Um, I can tell you that if you look at the numbers of those bulky stickers that we sell on a monthly basis um, for any item, metal or otherwise, um, since we started that program three or four years ago, um, you know, we're, we're getting, you know, roughly forty of them a month, I believe, is what comes up. So it's not a huge number, but there are forty people who understand the program and spend the six dollars to properly dispose of it, is some of the challenging ones that...
And some of the other things is, uh, you know, the day of collection, I believe you're supposed to put it out in the morning and the receptacle's supposed to be gone at night. I go by places that are there for the week, you know, and there's fifteen of them and they're full. So, you know, that's not being enforced either.
Counsel Cheney?
Wes, I just, uh, in, in defense of, of myself with my concern about that crosswalk, I would tell you, part of my problem was, I understand it was abandoned. One side was plowed and I watched this poor soul get about halfway across and, and start doing this before he headed over. That was my only point.
We're, we're, we have to do a little bit better selection of where we make our punch-throughs to get, uh, people off the road and onto the sidewalk.
Yeah, and the last thing I would say to you, and it sort of goes along, somebody mentioned the ice shelves on the edge. The sooner we get it off the sidewalk, the sooner the, the sidewalks will clean up. But the, but the crosswalk by the bicycle shop was a skating rink for several days. And it seems to me somebody, a supervisor, should be swinging down through there periodically, looking for those kinds of problems. I'd hope in the future they could do that.
No, I, I do want to make one more comment, sorry.
Let Counsel Lippman have a say here. Go ahead.
But just a quick one. Uh, I just wanted to comment that, uh, whenever I've called Public Works and talked to Wes about a situation downtown, I mean, they were right on it next day or that afternoon, so I appreciate that.
Sure. So I guess in terms of just the downtown specific focus for a moment, um, I think that, um, expectations of what, um, we're going to do uh, need to be sort of, I think, laid out in a, and I understand that we've had some turnover, employee turnover and some other things that can affect things. But I think what we should expect in a storm... But I think what we should expect in a storm, you know, from the merchant's standpoint, and, and be able to deliver against the standard as opposed to just kind of... There's a lot of good things that you laid out, but it doesn't really, if you're a merchant and you're trying to run your business, what we just all went through doesn't really help them understand what's going to be happening in terms of having access to that. So I guess, I think what you're hearing some counselors say is, we'd like you to come forward with a standard, and if what you have for equipment doesn't do it, make some proposals to us, either an adjustment to your budget or what have you. But I think we'd like to have a higher standard or a standard more like we've achieved in other years downtown.
And I think if I can add to that, if we're going to invest in the Colonial and the revitalization of downtown, snow problems adds nothing to the positive side of that.
Well, I think, I think what's frustrating to some of us anyway, I should just speak for myself, is that, and maybe we just have bad memories, is that this is a, to some extent, I think, a good old, the good old days, which weren't that many, it wasn't like decades ago, but we have recollections, right or wrong, that it didn't used to be this way. That we can all remember trucks being downtown and snow blowers and all that. And I guess what we're, what we're asking, what I'm asking is, what changed? Or are we just remembering it wrong? And I realize you haven't been here 20 years, but it just seems like 20 years ago, 15 years ago, or whatever, it was different.
Yeah, I'd have to say I got more constituent calls this year about snow removal in downtown than in all the years combined that I've been on council.
So what has changed? Equipment, policy?
I can't answer for the last 20 years, I can just tell you for the last three. And that is, our ability to respond is now hinged on, is can we, do we take the salters out of the back? And free up the...
We, we used to not have the dual trucks, so we went out with a plow truck or a sand or salting truck. And there were comments made, why don't we have dual trucks? We're the only, you know, department in the region that didn't have it. So we got more efficient on the plowing routes by having the dual trucks. So a truck and plow, and at the appropriate time in the storm, they can sand or salt. Now the challenge is, we don't have empty pickup trucks just with plows on them to be scooping the snow into, unless we pull the sanders and salters out, and that's not a simple process. So we've become more efficient on one end, but we've made some challenges on the snow removal into empty trucks because of that. And I think what, from hearing the counselor, and Counselor Chini in particular, will work up some numbers that can go to a, an outsourced firm, a trucking firm, who can come in just for that purpose, and we can focus on what we do better, let them handle it with the empty trucks, and we can focus on potholes, plowing, and salting, and maybe we outsource that component of it for the removal.
So I think we're all encouraging, exactly.
Yes.
And just to amplify what you're saying, Scott, about the roads, I would say, particularly I noticed in the last storm, that Laconia's roads were better than the state roads.
Absolutely.
And so the brining that you're doing and stuff like that, that is making a better situation.
Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, just one more quick question, Wes. What, what efficiency would a pole barn give you in, in what we're talking about now?
Part of it is what, in another place I was at, the pole barn was actually rigged to also hold the salters.
That's what I mean.
So you could back into it, you put the chains on it. You had to be a little careful when you were reloading it, but basically you hooked it to it, and you could drive out from underneath the salter. And it also...
That would give you a lot of efficiency.
Correct.
All right, anyone else on this subject? Okay, thank you for taking the time to make this presentation for us, we appreciate it.
Yes.
Next up is a administrative request for the Land and Buildings Subcommittee to develop a plan for the DPW compound. And that is a lengthy item on your agenda that starts on page 19. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had some significant settling of the Public Works facility due to just materials under the ground, and the structure wasn't designed for supporting itself on top of those particular materials the way it was done. This is a building, to my understanding, and those of you who've been here longer than I have will know the name of the car dealership. It was a car dealership back in the day, and we've inherited and converted it. So long and short of it, we've got some challenges. Our staff has looked at it, we brought in some engineers, we know we've got some settling. We think some of it we can live with, we want to do a little more probing and testing in a few areas just to make sure structurally we're in a safe condition with folks in operations occurring in that building. So I'm not going to get into all the detail of the report. The suggestion was that this be referred to Land and Buildings Committee to start taking a look at it, delving into, you know, what needs to, let me back up. When could we slate for either repairing or constructing new, either in that location or somewhere else? Depending on that answer, what short-term supports, fixes do we need to do to the building in order to get us to the time when we construct? And then the conversation about where do we construct for efficiencies of operations? Is there space there to do something? Do we have to do above and beyond? Because now we're building a new building on the same pore soil materials there. Not that it couldn't be engineered and, and made to work. But those kinds of conversations on, on a number of fronts, we think, would be better handled with a committee level, actually going over there, walking at the site, figuring out what our needs are for now. And obviously, if we are going to build something new, we want to make sure it's sized properly for the next, you know, 30 years at a minimum. So all those questions, and rather than dig into it here at this level, we thought it better to go to Land and Buildings Committee. And again, those are open meetings, and any council member, any member of the public can attend those and hear what's being discussed.
Any immediate comments or questions? All right, motion being ordered then to refer this matter to the Land and Buildings Subcommittee for further review. And that would be, would become item four on the agenda for the Lands and Buildings Subcommittee Chair by Counselor Hamel. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Chini seconded by Counselor Bowns, discussion. Okay, all those in favor of referring the issue of the long-term Public Works compound plans to the Land and Buildings Committee, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And let's see, Counselor Hamel chairs that committee, I believe. I'll leave it to you to decide how you want to handle that in terms of meeting, Subcommittee meeting and that sort of thing. You might look at maybe a meeting in April if we can...
Yeah, I want to do, I want to go over and talk with Wes and have some discussion before we have a meeting.
Okay, item C on our new business is introduction of ordinance number 2019-119-13-02, amending chapter 119, Building Construction, Article 2, Adoption of Standards, Paragraph 119-13, and a request to schedule a public hearing on March 25, 2019 during the regular city council meeting to gather input prior to the adoption of this ordinance. This counselor's issue starts on page 29, or is page 29 of your, 29 and 30 of your packet tonight. Myers, you want to expound upon this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but I will defer to the Planning and Code Enforcement Director, Dean Trefethan, as he is the one who approached me about looking to restructure this so that we could better meet the needs of folks in the community who are requesting a review by the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Good evening, gentlemen. This board has been in existence for a long time, and, and most of the time, it has had either no or very few members on it. We have, over the past few months, been able to get the membership up to three, so at least they could have a core if they need to have a meeting. And we have had a couple of cases where they have, have had a need to meet. However, one of those cases, the applicant for the case wants to have a full board. So we, we haven't been able to get a full board in, in years. And so this is an effort to try to get us a full board. There are five specific skill sets that the ordinance now requires one of the members to have. They're very specific, and they're very difficult to find people that actually do these kinds of things. So we have three of them now filled, and we have structural engineer, we have an architect, and we have an electrician that are on the board now. And it would be our intention to just change the language that says that three of the five members need to be one of these specific skill sets, and the other two can just be general members of the public.
Or in some cases, it could be two people with the same skill set. Right now, we're limited to only having one.
Questions or comments? We have a series of proposed motions here for us tonight that are on page 29. So if there are no questions or comments, we'll get right to motions. A motion being ordered to waive a reading of ordinance, of this particular ordinance in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion, Counselor Haynes seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Next up, a motion being ordered to move the first reading of ordinance 2019-119-13-02, amending chapter 119, Building Construction, Article 2, Adoption of Standards. Anyone care to make that motion? Counselor Haynes, second. Counselor Bowns, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving a first reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. And finally, a motion being ordered to schedule a public hearing on March 25, 2019 during the regular city council meeting to gather input prior to the adoption of this ordinance. Counselor Haynes makes that motion, Counselor Hosmer seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling a public hearing, please raise a hand. Thank you, six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up is unfinished business. Item number one on unfinished business is a request to change the speed limit on Daisy Gardner Road and Leighton Avenue North to 30 miles per hour. That item was tabled at our last meeting. Has anyone wished to bring it off the table tonight? Counselor Hamel? Motion to bring it off the table, is there a second? Counselor Lippman seconds it. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, all right, this matter is back on the table. Who would like to address it?
I was the one that motioned to put it on the table to see if any public comment came in between meetings here. And it's sensing that any has.
None has come to my direct attention.
I'd put on the table, Public Works director indicates he has heard nothing also.
So do we want to proceed with the recommended action on this tonight?
Yes, please, that'd be my motion.
I'm sorry?
That would be my motion to take Public Works.
All right, Counselor Lippman moves that the city council approve establishing a speed limit of 30 miles per hour on Daisy Gardner Road and Leighton Avenue North. Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Counselor Haynes seconds the motion. Discussion. Counselor Bowns.
Why are we considering...
Microphone, please.
Why are we considering 30 miles an hour instead of 25? What, I, I, I got...
The other way around.
I think we were reducing it to 30 miles an hour.
Yes, right.
And I'm saying, why not 25?
35 now.
It's 35 now, why not 25? Really dangerous place, have you been out there lately?
Not sure that we are enabled by state legislation to go to 25, are we?
That was my question.
I believe in certain cases, but I know Wes is much better versed in this than I am.
There has to be some physical engineering issues that are there such that you could drop the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. And in certain areas on Leighton Avenue North and even Daisy Gardner with the, the corners in the sightline, 25 miles an hour is an appropriate speed limit.
Say that again?
There has to be some physical problem with the road, and that is what justifies it going less than 30 miles an hour. And there are quite, there are, I won't say quite a few, there are, there are areas on both streets where the sightline distance limits your ability to see, and it would be appropriate to drop at 25 miles an hour.
So you think 25 miles an hour would be a good...
Correct. Again, that was not what the...
You're saying we could defend 25?
We could defend 25 miles an hour.
All right, would you want to make it 25?
I do.
Say, who made the motion now?
Henry.
I'm sorry, Henry, would you consider that a friendly amendment?
If that's the professional's recommendation, sure.
And the second was by Counselor Hosmer, do you consider that a friendly amendment?
Oh, I wasn't the second on that, no.
Counselor Haynes, yes, all right. So we have a friendly amendment to change the motion to 25 miles per hour. All right, everybody understand that? So what's on the table now is 25 miles an hour. Any further discussion? Counselor Hamel.
You know, I don't see anything wrong with 25. If you drop it to 30, they're going to do 35. So if you drop it to 25, they're going to do 30, so...
And it, whether it's enforced.
Well, if you've been out there, I mean, if you, if you've driven that road...
I've been out there.
Yeah, you've driven that road, 25 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour on Mechanic Street is crazy, you know? So you'd be, you should be doing 20 or 25 on Mechanic Street, but I'm...
Anyone else? Oh, okay, the motion is 25 miles an hour. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, motion carries, and the speed limit on those two roads is now 25 miles an hour. Okay, page 32, the next page in your packet, is a proposed criteria to accept roads as is. Who's going to tackle that? Mr. Myers?
I will start it off, Mr. Mayor. This is an ongoing conversation that we've had, that we've broached first, targeting the method is Camp Crown area several months ago, that we had a very positive meeting and talked about accepting roads as is in agreement with abutters signing up and, and offering the appropriate documents. We can go ahead and do that, that seemed to be a very positive response overall. The discussion out of that was to have staff go back and work up the criteria for accepting roads as is. So that's where we are tonight. If you look on the very back page, in the terms of the overall number of problematic streets as we referred to them back when we began this journey, and this journey just didn't start in the last couple of years. Wes and I have documentation that this journey began probably back in the 1970s, if not earlier, of correspondence from Public Works Directors and City Managers to City Councils and about unaccepted streets, and what's a private road, and what are we maintaining? And Wes and I had kind of a little chuckle the other day, and we said, we just wish the council had taken care of this in the 1970s. And I'm thinking that most of you probably would wish that as well, so we weren't dealing with it. But I think when we started, we were talking around 50 problematic streets, some we've declared emergency lanes. I know Counselor Bowns is going to make a motion to refer this to the committee level so we can kind of flush it out a little more, and, and we think that's appropriate. But I think there's 31 or 32 streets on this list that we as staff believe meet the criteria for accepting as is, assuming the abutters are willing to do that. And this would clean up another very good chunk of lion's share remaining of what's left, to only leave us, you know, a dozen or so that we've kind of, kind of continued to work through the process with putting them in one of the silos. So this is tied into the presentation when attorney, Attorney Carrie Roman was here, probably about two or three months ago. So this is just putting the criteria to back up what she had explained to you all, where there seemed to be consensus to go forward. So we would support going to the committee level to get into the detail versus doing it in a big group setting, and then bring this back to you once the committees have edited it.
Questions or comments before we get to motions? So Counselor, I understand you have a motion you want to make?
Well, I want to refer this to, to the committee.
Which committee?
I think we're going to refer it to, I always get confused with my committees, but I think we're going to refer it to Public Works.
Yes, I think that's where we had done the emergency lanes to begin with.
Public Works, all right. Counselor, Counselor Bowns makes a motion to refer the acceptance, possibility of accepting streets as is to the Public Works Committee as item number three. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor Hosmer seconds the motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Okay, so that is now item three on the Public Works docket.
And I guess I would look to schedule that at our next meeting, not for our next meeting, but schedule it at our next meeting.
At our next meeting?
Yeah.
All right, so I might ask that you and Counselor Hamel have a consultation at some point as to what meetings you're going to share for the month of April?
Yeah, I think that that's Counselor Hosmer and Counselor Haynes, and we'll, we'll figure that out, we can probably do that.
He needs to schedule a hearing at the next meeting, and so do you. So not a hearing, but a meeting of your Subcommittee. So if you guys could pick who's going to go what day and, and... So if you guys could pick who's going to go what day, and April would be the most obvious solution.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, the last item on our agenda tonight is the Colonial Theater project update. You have a resolution, proposed resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero-three. That is, was distributed to you earlier via email and is on your, on your table tonight. It's going to be necessary to read this. We can't waive the reading of this because it was not forewarned with the meeting of the notice, so I've got to read this, okay? So if you will bear with me, and I think it's a good idea because it gives the public sense of what we're talking about exactly here. So if you will bear with me. This is a proposed resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero-three. Two thousand and nineteen, a resolution relative to the city's purchase of theater equipment for the Colonial Theater and details of the city's lease with Belknap Economic Development Council. Resolved by the city council, by the city council of the city of Laconia as follows. Whereas, the Laconia City Council on May twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, committed financial support to the Belknap Economic Development Council's plan to purchase and renovate the three Colonial Theater buildings in downtown Laconia. And whereas, Laconia City Council amended and reconfirmed its financial commitment to the project on September eleven, two thousand seventeen. And whereas, Laconia City Council remains committed to this project as being vital to the overall economic vitality of the city in general and the downtown area in particular. And whereas, New Hampshire RSA thirty-three colon three expressly authorizes municipalities to issue bonds or notes for purposes of economic development, which shall include private-public, public-private partnerships involving capital improvements, loans, and guarantees. Now therefore be it resolved that the Laconia City Council acknowledges the current construction budget of nine point six million dollars is void of any allowance for theater equipment, i.e. rigging, lighting, and sound, and agrees independently to specify and pay for the necessary theater equipment at an approximate cost of nine hundred thousand dollars, including installation. Furthermore, be it also resolved that the city council acknowledges the developers operating pro forma for years two through seven of the project relies on income from the city's rental of the auditorium and related amenities at a rate not to be lower than twelve thousand dollars per month or one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year, and acknowledges that the rent could, from time to time, be higher. The rent shall be all, including gross, with exceptions, that the city shall be responsible for paying for the cost of electricity and heat, air conditioning, in the relevant spaces, which shall be separately metered. The details of the city's lease with the developer for the auditorium and related space shall specify any income the developer receives during years two through seven for the sale or lease of the second and third floor of the Main Street Building, one of three, shall go toward reducing the city's monthly rent obligation until the sum reaches the twelve thousand dollar per month, one hundred and forty-four thousand dollar per year mark. This resolution shall take effect after two readings and upon its passage. So a motion would be in order at this time to move resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero-three for discussion. Made by Councilor Bowens, second it. Second by Councilor Haynes, thank you. All right, so we are in discussion of, of item number three. And let me say as a preamble to that discussion that, assuming this resolution passes, the purpose of it is that I will draft a letter addressed to the Belknap Economic Development Council, informing them formally, if you will, that we have passed this resolution and what it calls for. The purpose of that letter is so that they have that letter on hand to be able to provide to their potential investors. So the investors are assured of the city's participation in this project. That's what the purpose, the real purpose of this resolution is, is to ensure the, assure the investors of the city's position, and that the city is cognizant of what the issues are at present and is prepared to step up in these two, two instances, on these two items. Discussion. Council Chini.
Mayor, I'm prepared to, to support this, but I am frankly concerned and would ask possibly to amend one minor, not so minor, item, and that is, this says an approximate cost of nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, including installation. I'd like it to say not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars, because I, I just worry this keeps creeping, or could keep creeping. And I really would like to put a period there saying not to exceed the nine hundred thousand dollar mark.
Okay, any further discussion? Or anybody react to that? Councilor Haynes.
Is there a contingency in this figure?
I'm sorry?
Is there a contingency in this figure?
No. There is a contingency in the overall project construction budget of nine point six million dollars. There's actually two contingencies in that budget, but there's no contingency in this budget, in the equipment budget, because it was part of the overall project, and therefore the contingency was part of the overall project that would have covered this as well.
My concern, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, what do we do if now they need another hundred thousand dollars and they have to come back to us again?
Well, my, my reaction, councilor, to what you're suggesting is that I would like you to take into consideration that, that this figure is based on very preliminary decisions that were made a year and a half ago now, the pricing that was provided a year and a half ago now, and that the, so it's a, it's a budget, if you will, or was a budget, that was part of the bigger budget, like I said. And, and when we end up, like, for example, right now, we are in, in, I wouldn't call them negotiations, conversations with two potential managers of the theater. And hopefully, one of those two will work out, though there's no guarantee of it. But my point is that at some point in time, hopefully, we're going to select a management company to run the theater for the city on some arrangement, and that will have to be approved by city council, obviously. And whoever that is, they're going to have considerable input into what actual equipment we end up buying, okay? And so it could be different. Now, we have a sound system spec now. Maybe they don't like that sound system, they prefer a different one, or, or whatever, as an example. But I guess my, my, my assurance to you as a, as a counterargument is that regardless of what number this is in here, the city is going to buy, specify, spec, and buy this equipment, which means that the city council is going to have the final authority on this. This is not an authorization for anybody to spend nine hundred thousand dollars. It is simply saying, we're prepared to pay approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. But the actual equipment specifications and purchase is something that I would intend to bring back to the council to make the final decision on. And I expect at that point in time that there's probably going to be some conversation about, do we buy this level of sound equipment or this level? And this is what the, what the considerations are, okay? This one costs two hundred thousand, this one costs two hundred and twenty thousand, or whatever the case may be is. Which are we going to pick? But in any case, all those decisions are going to be made by this body. And so we're setting a budget here, but in the end, it's going to be the council's decision as to whether or not to spend eight hundred and ninety, or nine hundred and ten, or whatever that number ends up being. And we'll have total and full control of that, you will as a councilor.
I accept that. Thank you.
Councilor Bowens.
Yeah, just as kind of a history to this equipment piece, that was always regularly part of the project until we had to make changes with respect to it. But we spent a considerable amount of time looking at different options, getting advice from folks who knew what they were talking about in terms of the equipment. We didn't, this number is old, but we didn't pull this number out of thin air. We had estimates from people, we had meetings, we looked at different riggings, what we needed and what we didn't need. So this has some, not counting inflation or whatever, this has some, some real, I won't call it solid numbers because things change, but it has some real history in terms of working hard at coming up with figures that made sense, so that when we, when we opened the doors at the Colonial Theater, we weren't asking people to bring candles and lawn chairs into the building.
Further discussion? Councilor Hamel.
Just one more thing to add to that for Council Chini is that we're in the process now of having that whole itemized list of equipment looked at by another party to verify what we need or don't need, so.
Councilor Hosmer. My, my question is that, as I sit here, I don't know anything about rigging and, and sound systems, but I guess what I hear you're saying, Councilor Hamel, is that you've got a third party who's taking a look at this, and maybe it's not a competitive bid, but it's some sort of objective input that we're, the money we're spending and what we're looking at.
That's a good way to put it. It's an objective look at what.
A year and a half ago, we had a seacoast area firm provide several different alternatives as when this was part of the overall project and whatnot. And the committee, the building committee, went through all this, plus or minus, do we need this level, do we need that level, and made some decisions. And how many line sets we're going to be in the rigging, whatever that means. Councilor Bowens. You know, how many, what is the other term? I forget how many, something, there's not blinkers, not blinkers. It's something, I don't know what, I didn't know what half that stuff meant, but the experts did. And, and so out of that process came the specifications that we all agreed on at that point in time. Now, so, but the point, Councilor Hamel is, is making, which is seconding what I was trying to say earlier, and that is that, once we get further along in this, those specifications are going to be reviewed by more third parties than have been reviewed to date. And one is doing it as we speak, that Councilor Hamel and I, working with former mayor Seymour, have been, have been working with a third, a different third party to review these as well, and make recommendations based on that person's considerable experience working in various theaters and whatnot around the area as to whether or not he concurs with what was specified earlier. And that probably will not be the last review. But as I said, the final decisions will be made at this table, because there'll probably be some options. Dimmers, that's what the word is, dimmers. I don't even know what dimmers are, other than the obvious, but dimmers seem to be a big deal on how many, whether you had, whether you had a hundred or two hundred, whatever.
They are a big deal. They are.
So, well, I appreciate that explanation from, and the work that you've done on this. I, I think it, I feel better now knowing that when these numbers are firmed up and there's a bit of a better understanding of it, it comes back to the, to the council to look at them and to vote. So I, I think this, I share David, Councilor Bowens's concerns that you, when we open up the Colonial Theater, we certainly don't want to have candles and, and lawn chairs. It has to be a quality facility with this type of investment, and it's too important to, to the city of Laconia.
All right, are we ready to vote on this issue? I appreciate your patience and understanding. All those in favor of adopting on first reading, then we'll have a second reading at the next meeting? Do we, or can we do both tonight?
No, you do a first reading tonight, and you move to schedule a public hearing.
Do a first reading.
So I need a motion to sc, I need two motions then.
Two motions, first reading, except the first reading.
First motion, which is one on the table now that was made by Councilor Bowens, is to approve on first reading, resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero-three. All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes in affirmative. For the record, it's a unanimous vote, and the motion is approved. Secondly, we need to schedule a public hearing for March twenty-fifth during the regular city council meeting for resolution two thousand nineteen dash zero-three. Councilor Hamel makes that motion. Councilor Haynes seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling that public hearing, please raise a hand. We have six votes in affirmative that motion carries as well. On behalf of Councilor Hamel, I very much appreciate the support from all of you for this project, continuing support, I should say. Thank you.
I, I, can I say something?
Sorry?
No. Oh, damn. I wasn't asking you for permission.
Council comments?
I just wanted to join in your commendations for, to this council and the past council that had taken on this colonial project, and how important I think it is to the city of Laconia. So thank you all sitting here, you are forward-thinking folks.
Councilor Haynes.
I'd like to echo Councilor Hosmer's, and thank you, and Councilor Hamel, for the, all the work you put into this. Obviously, there's a lot more that we don't know about.
Going on sixty meetings.
And if I can add, I think the three of us.
Even if I don't know what a dimmer is yet.
Mayor, if I can add, I think the three of us coming in late, it's, at least for me, it's difficult to understand it all. And I, I echo what the other two councillors have said about appreciating the explanations you've given us right along, and for you and Bob's work on this, I really do appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Well, Councilor Haynes.
I'd like to thank Council Chini for asking for that meeting, because it was very informative, and it left nothing to anyone's imagination as where we were going and how we were going to proceed, so.
Yeah, I think if, I think if nothing else, we have made.
And to thank the other gentleman that came also with you.
Yep, we have made an attempt to be, not just attempt to be, have been completely above board on this issue, and nobody's trying to hide anything from the council or from anybody else for that matter. Wish the project to be judged on its merits, and it is what it is. So hopefully, the resolution of all this will be something that we'll all be very proud of. Anyone else on council comments? All right, I'm sorry, Councilor Haynes.
Wes, we're not trying to, we weren't trying to beat you up. The last storm, the first pass, Dirkie Street already was bare. So the work that you and the gentlemen have put in is appreciated, and I agree, I think it was Council Chini said that, you know, there are times that Laconia's roads are in much better shape than even the state's. So we're here to help you.
All right, no other business to come before this meeting tonight. I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at eight forty-seven PM. Thank you. Dean?